Good morning. I'd like to call the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. It's Monday, October 20th, 2014. It is now 8:31. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to ask the Selectmen have it. Lead us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Charles. Second order of business, public forum limited to three minutes regarding any agenda item. Anybody wishing to address the Board for any agenda item. See, none will move on to item three, which is approval of the minutes of October 6th, which was a regular meeting. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any additions or corrections to the minutes of October 6th?
On page six, Tracy, you said that I had a comment that there are 250 other properties that have no value. I made a comment with there are 250 other properties owned by the town, some of which have no value.
Okay. Correct that, please. Pleasure. Any other corrections, comments? Okay, see none, I'll call for a vote on the minutes as corrected. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Item four, Finance Director Sheila Valano, receive monthly report for the month of September. Morning, Sheila.
Good morning.
Sheila.
Okay. You have your September reports through September 30th. Twenty-five percent of the way through the year already. It's hard to believe that. Okay, we start with revenue and at the end of September, we've received 53.5% of our revenue budget compared to 52.2% last year. So that's a nice difference from last year, and last year we had a really good year as well. So that's a good sign. Tax collections are at 54.2% versus 52.8%. So again, that's a good sign too, although that really could be timing. I say that all the time with taxes, you really don't know until you get closer to the end of the year. But as far as revenue goes, we are in good shape. I just wanted to point out one positive, more positive note is Finance Department has collected 47.8% of their interest income budget. That's a first in many years that we've actually, and there's a couple of reasons for that. First of all, our budget has been reduced.
Right.
But also because we had the bond proceeds that we borrowed in August along with tax collections, even with the meager interest, you know, rate yield, we were able to get a little bit of return on our millions of dollars. So we collected for the year $11,940.
It's a far cry from the old days.
It is. Those are the days when we had a $600,000 revenue budget compared to 25%.
I remember when we had about 800.
Sixty-eight hundred, yeah.
Yeah.
Any questions on revenue? I probably should point out too that the Building Department has collected 41%, 41.7% of their budget too, and that's really due to the Guilford Commons Project DDR.
Okay.
Expenditures? We have obligated as of September 30th, 39.7% of our budget compared to 40.6% last September. There are some departments that appear to look like they have a higher percent obligated, such as the debt service principal, but again, even at 87.6%, that's clearly timing because we always spend 100% exactly of our debt service budget because it's scheduled. Other departments, such as insurance at 56%, just represents two of the quarterly payments being made rather than one. So they're really, other than, you know, some of the obvious percentage that are higher than 25% because of blanket encumbrances, there's really no, nothing unusual to report to you on expenditures.
Employee benefits. Sheila, can you?
Employee benefits is really related to the pension contribution because that's a big part of that budget and that's made in July, the whole amount. So again, that's a timing issue as well. Okay. There are no questions. I could move to medical. Now, if you remember, medical, we had a seemingly great month in July and then a horrible month in August, and in September it sort of evened out a little bit at $1,030,000. So I started my normal annualizing out the existing months in the year. And by doing that, actually, it gives us an annualized projected deficit of $524,000. I was a little bit reluctant to start the annualized average, but I don't think it's a bad thing just to keep us on our toes in keeping a watch on it. One thing to note though is that there is one claim already that has exceeded our stop loss. Don't forget, we reduced the stop loss to $125,000.
$150,000.
$150,000. So there is one claim that has exceeded the stop loss by $403,000. And I've actually started to note that on this report so you could see the effects of the stop loss premium because it did cost us, as I noted at the bottom of the first section, $845,000 for the stop loss premium. And we've already reached that by half. So this particular claim is a very large catastrophic claim, and we will not be incurring any more costs for that particular claim. So we're hoping that the stop loss will help us keep our claims down a little bit going forward. There are $986,000 in total that have reached the 150% of the stop loss, which is 75%. So I've shown you that as well. Kind of gives you a feel for where we're heading. So I'm hoping that we're going to see that projected annualized deficit drop as we go along.
I have a question on this new format, which I think is really good as far as explaining it, but if you can just give me a little bit more detail. The actual claims paid, and let's look at the month of September, is $1,039,47. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. All right. So the $986,835, that's the claims that exceed $75,000?
Yes, and that's more of an informational column. You're not going to get that to put to anything. That's for the first three months of the year. So that's in total.
Okay, so that's a year-to-date number?
Yes. I probably should put that.
Okay.
You're right.
That's what confused me a little bit.
But there's one claim that's really driving it.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
My question, Sheila, is on the process of, say, that the 403, the claim that's exceeded, have we paid that and is that in the paid numbers?
Yes.
And then we get reimbursed?
No.
How does that work mathematically?
They, the insurance company picks up the difference. So if you look at it, the $125 is like our deductible, so to speak.
The $150.
I keep saying that, $150. Yes.
Okay. So everything over $150 does not come into the column on claims?
No, it doesn't.
Correct. Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So from this, from, to pick up where Gary, his point, so from this point on, for that one contract, that one claim, I should say, any other expenses would be picked up by the insurance company?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay.
And also down at the bottom on the revenue section, just for your information, the Board of Finance was asking a little bit about this too. I've separated out the employer by town and Board of Ed contribution and the employee contributions by town and Board of Ed. So we could see the breakdown of how the contributions are being made to the Internal Service Fund. Just informational only.
So I guess we could say that we're a quarter of the way through the fiscal year. At this point, we made a good decision by going with the stop loss, reducing it down to $150, picking up the higher premium.
Yes.
This one case kind of proved it.
Oh, yes. Yes.
I mean, let's face it, it was kind of rolling of the dice, but we won.
We did, but we also were informed by Anthem that there were cases, claims from last year that were likely to continue.
That we're going to carry forward. Yeah, I remember that discussion. Okay. Any other questions on the medical report? Anything else to bring our attention?
I don't think so, unless you have any other questions on any of the reports.
Any on Capital or anything?
Well, the reports are here on Capital if you had any questions, if you wanted to take a look. And then there's Gulf Course reports. We made some minor changes on the reports to give you better information. On Gulf Course, we added a line for events, for event revenue. So that's been segregated out, so you can see that was mixed in with the greens fees before, and we separated that out. So that's almost $2,600 if it's been collected this year.
And we separated the transfer out.
Well, what I did is I made the operating transfer at the bottom because normally in a financial statement, you would see revenue, expenditures, profit, loss, and then operating transfers below because it's not really part of your operation. So that just gives you a better idea of the actual operations of the Gulf Course without our $30,000. And then that's below. So actually, I should probably say that at the end of September, the Gulf Course had an operating surplus of $267.39, which is positive. And with the $30,000 transfer, that gave us a $30,267 change in fund balance is what we call it. But still, now that has to carry them through the rest of the year. That's a one-time transfer.
Anything else?
I don't know.
Anything else, Sheila?
No, I'm all set.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item five, receive status update on the plan of conservation and development. I think Mr. Crowell and we have Aunt Jay Kestner, Chairman of that committee. Morning.
Good morning.
We're just here briefly to tell you that we're moving full speed ahead now with the development of the plan of conservation and development.
We've given some press on that, too.
Yeah, we're getting some attention. As you know, we've retained Malone and McBroom. We were hoping they were going to be here this morning, but unfortunately, they couldn't. They are busily working. The committee is meeting regularly now. Gary's been able to join us. And we are developing the final document, the final draft of the document. We anticipate, based on our meeting that we had on Friday, that we'll have a draft plan in early November, preliminary draft, which will then be subject to some public, as much public input as we can obtain. We expect to hold a public forum, probably, I would guess in December perhaps.
Or early spring, I think, if we're even. It's hard with the holidays if we get the draft ready in November. So I think what we're hoping is that we get some, we'll see how many comments we get back. And I don't think we want to rush that because we would like to have the public hearing be, you know, fairly productive and have it pretty well vetted by that time.
We will have the document on the town website as soon as it's available in November. And as some of you know, if you looked at the town website, there is a place on it now that calls to public attention to the fact that the plan of conservation development's being worked on again. And we invite residents to tell us what they think. The space on the website also references a number of the background documents that we've prepared. So we're hoping that the public can really get involved in this now.
Great. So based upon what you've done so far, do you just get a lot of changes? Do certain areas are still hard to say?
Well, primarily, I think what we found is that because this is sort of a guiding land use policy document, there hasn't been like a big shift in direction. There are some new things that we're looking at with regard to, the initial plan in 2002, there was no economic development plan. So this is the first plan done since we did that study. So there is some more economic development language in it than usual. But it's also too, we've seen issues like coastal resilience, which, you know, we've had some big storms in the town. It's been a big issue for the town, both in facilities and maintenance and transportation, to have to deal with those things. And so there are some new issues. And so I think we'll probably get more comments, you know, as a result of that kind of discussion.
Great. Okay. Thank you. They appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item six, Fire Chief Charles Hershey, consider and take possible action on a resolution authorizing the first selectmen to sign the 2014 State Homeland Security Grant Program, Region Two memorandum of decree. Morning, Chief.
Morning. This is the same memorandum the board has been signing for the last eight years anyway, to spend $1 million over 22 towns. So it's the same grant.
I'll move we approve. First, let me assign the grant.
Second. Okay. One question I have. This is for Region Two.
Right.
And this is the one we have to sign about three times, if I remember.
There's several of them, but this is hopefully only one time we have to sign this one.
Okay.
And we need to do the resolution also, which you're voting to do today also.
Okay. Do we have the resolution on this? Okay. All right. Motion's been made in seconds. Any further discussion? Seeing that, I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah, except we should have got that pitching coach, Charles. I mean, the batting coach. We got the wrong one. He knows what I'm talking about. Town engineers in Fort Lee.
Good morning.
Thanks for taking care of that project.
You're welcome.
This time.
Yes.
We saw it on the way home.
Okay.
Seven dot one, discuss and take possible action to approve vendor for ATAC upgrades to the break room at the Public Works Department. Start with that first.
Yeah. This is a project that was approved under the regular budget. Steve Nidoff worked with the three vendors to get prices. They're all quoted on the same scope of work. The low proposal was East River Energy at $10,745. They got everything included in that package. And it's something that appears to get done. So I would recommend the Board of Selectmen award the improvement contract to East River Energy for the quoted price.
Okay. And this was in the capital?
Capital budget.
Capital budget under the operating project?
Right.
Okay. Jim?
There's a couple of questions.
Sure.
East River Energy refers to a couple of rebates that are available. Would that have applied to all of the proposals?
Yes.
Okay. So that has nothing to do with whoever wins?
No, no. That's done through the, you know.
Yes. Second question is that the R and Bs appears to be sort of slightly larger equipment. Is there any, what are any of these value? There's an 80,000 BTU against a 75,000 BTU and a three-ton condenser against a two-and-a-half-ton condenser. Was there any value in doing the larger one? Or did they miss the specs? Or why is that?
I really don't know that particular answer to that particular question. They were asked to evaluate it. Steve was very content with the smaller system.
The same building's maybe getting involved in?
No, not in capital.
Not in capital.
How move we approve the ATAC improvements to Public Works to East River Energy for $10,745?
Second. Motion's been made. Second it. Is there any further discussion? Okay, see none, I'll call for question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Jim, motion carries. Item seven dot two, consider and take possible action to award bid six dash 14, 15, 18 inch chipper wood, chipper capacity wood, and recommend to the Board of Finance, the wood chipper. Is that right, 18 inches, Jim?
Yes. Yes. That's the diameter of the piece of wood it will chip. It's pretty amazing.
Pretty big.
Yeah.
Says, I don't know.
Says a foot and a half.
I don't know anything about wood chipper.
But you can remember the last two years with the amount of time we had, and we had to hire guys with wood chippers all over town. We have an old chipper that's much smaller. That's 30 years old, just one.
And I would remind the board that this is a bonded item that's in the capital plan that was approved in our last five-year capital plan.
Right. $60,000 was set aside in that plan.
Yeah. Which, if we approve today, has to go to the Board of Finance.
Okay. The low bidder to bid number six dash 14, 15 was Newtown Power Equipment, Inc. It was a Morbok chipper, an excellent piece of equipment, heavy duty. And their bid was $49,962.01. This was discussed with the Public Works Commission last, the last meeting. They agreed that this is the best price. That was on October 9th. We also discussed, I think you should have received information, I asked Allison to send it over. There's a, you have, they had some information in that, on the safety feature that they have. It's called ChipSafe Operator Safety Shield, in which you, there are a badge just put on the wrist and the feed that the operator was feeding into this chipper. So if anybody, if anything should happen where they extend into the throat of the chipper?
We will get this?
It shuts down.
Let me pass it through.
That was my oversight. I should have made sure there was copy.
Oh, Garrett.
It's a terrific safety feature, only offered by Morbok. And I think it's, we discussed-
That obviously trips into it or in the car.
Right. Because with 18 inches.
It's not like you're going to, you know, hurt a finger or something like that. You're gone. So, or lose an arm or something like that. I think it's a wonderful safety feature. They're the only ones that have it. We didn't want to include in the original bid because it would have excluded some other manufacturers that also have good equipment. But in light of the fact it's a low price for the bid, we discussed with the commission about negotiating the purchase of this safety feature, which even with the $49,000, would still be well under the $60,000 appropriated.
So is this an additional $3,600?
Yes. So I would recommend the Board of Selectmen approve the purchase from Newtown for the bid price and authorize us to proceed with discussions with them on getting the price of that safety feature, as cheap as we can.
So moved as requested.
Okay, so wait.
I was trying to figure out how to say it.
All right.
Seconds.
Okay. So now, what the hell are we doing?
Okay, so we're approving the 49, and then he's going to, with the ability to prove-
Removing bid number six, 14, 15, to the wood chipper for $49,962.
Plus an additional $3,600 up to $3,600.
Okay, right.
For-
So he's going to try to negotiate it down.
Yes. For the safety item.
Do you have that in the motion? Okay.
Just want to make sure we're doing the right thing.
It's like I said.
Tracy, now.
You got to watch Jim once in a while, you know?
What's your famous line?
You're watching Jim a lot.
Okay, we have a motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Approved. Item seven dot three, discuss and take possible action on the purchase of a large printer copier.
Again, this is a capital item that was in the budget. It's replacement of a large plan copier, which we use on a regular basis. It's used by the public a lot when they come in for copies of their own house plans and surveys and everything else. We can't get toner for anymore. We've researched every place we can. It's just not available.
How old is the other one?
I guess 15 years old. I don't remember.
Now, is it better to purchase it or lease it?
We've talked to the Department of Finance, and they geared us to this Aztec technologies. And this price, I think it's probably better to just purchase it. This printer also can be used as a plotter, in the event that the plotter we have in the future should have problems. So it's a multiple, multi, has multiple capabilities, let's put it that way. We had money, we had $15,000 set aside for the purchase in the budget, and this price is considerably lower than that. The purchase price is $8,429, but if we add in an extended two-year warranty, that would bring the price up to $11,185, which is still considerably below the $15,000 we thought would be appropriated for this. So I would recommend the Board of Selectmen authorize the purchase.
And again, this is at the operating budget.
Yes, it is.
Jim, you know, I have no question. I need the item and the price. I'm just looking at the warranty. It's $1,400 a year. It's what, 15, 18% of the cost of, for, its predecessor apparently has lasted 15 years.
Yeah.
Is the warranty warranted? That's my question.
It's a good question. I don't know. You know, it's a piece of equipment that's used commonly in the business. Maybe Charles would know better than I. I don't know. These kind of printing machines, it's saying, seem high to me, too.
How often would it break in the first two years? I guess that's the question.
Yeah.
It's a brand new.
We have a one-year warranty coming with the purchase.
The problem is, you know, whether or not it'll break for sure. If it does, it's so costly because it's so, you know, it's like opening the hood of your car now. You have to have a skilled technician plus the parts. It's a parts replacing situation. All you need is a circuit board down and there's your three grand.
So the extended warranty goes beyond whatever their-
Well, the one-year warranty we get with the purchase. That's $8,429.
Because it says here, one-year extended warranty.
And then there's extended warranty for two years. And that's what I proposed.
Which would be the second and third? Is that?
Yes.
So it's a total of three.
It's a three-year warranty.
Yeah, it comes with three-year warranty. You know, it's somewhat of a gamble, but maybe again, facing mics, you're on trucks, you really have a lot more problems with the first year.
This is a warranty, not a service fee.
Yeah, that one makes a difference.
I mean, it'd be nice if you didn't need the warranty for the first couple of years and then pick this up in the five, six, and seven.
Yeah, you can use it for 10 years.
It's not going to work.
That's what I was going to break down, is five or 10 years from now. You're still going to pay full price.
That's not the way. You'd think that a piece of equipment of that level would come with some warranty.
Well, it does the first year.
It does with one year. That's usually when the problem is.
And, you know, it is for the first year, and it is a warranty. We could, they did say within the first year, if we opted for it, we could purchase it then. The problem is the money's in this year's budget. And then coming back, and it's basically, you know, basically $1,500. If we came back next year and this money's been spent and that the item's been closed, then we would have to then come back with a special appropriation. So at least you get three years of worries for the operation at this one time. It's still well below, but be some of the competitive pricing.
Yeah, maybe we-
We're not talking for all.
We heard earlier in Sheila's report how, you know, the same situation, but obviously, you make an investment in something, you got to take care of it.
That's fine. It says it's, again, it's five years from now that it's going to cost us, or hopefully, or hopefully doesn't, but more likely.
I will say-
I mean, it's a fairly standard of equipment at this point in time. I mean, are they made to last forever? No. But, you know, when they work, they work.
As a reference, the one we have now, we've had all these years, and the reason we're replacing it is not because it's not operating, it's because we can't get toner. You know, that's the thing about these, it's built in obsolescence.
Right. And well, in all fairness, technology changes. There's no question about that. I mean, like you said, the one you have is toner. This is, isn't this inkjet now or dye?
Yes.
Now liquid dye.
I don't know how we're going to get to an answer on this one. I-
Make a motion.
I would make a motion that we approve- I would make a motion that we approve the eight four two nine to purchase it, and just ask Jim and maybe, I don't know, Pam, do you have any familiarity with warranties or no? I, I don't know how we, I don't know how we get to an answer on it. I, you know, I.
Maybe do a little more research on the machine itself.
I would certainly authorize it between, uh, Jim and the First Selectmen and maybe Pam.
I mean, if you're only.
Yeah.
It sounded like one of your arguments was because it was in this year's budget, right? Is it a possibility, but we could purchase it after some experience with the machine?
With a year, within a year.
Right.
Can we carry over?
I, I would, uh, I would wait until we have it a year and see.
You might find out that, you know, it's a lemon. I mean, lemons exist.
Yeah.
Or maybe a little more research on the machine to see what other people are saying. Do they break down to an op, I mean, not that.
You know, let me, let me just ask the Finance Director, because she buys a lot of copiers, and pretty much for all our, uh, office departments. Sheila, what do you, what's your experience with the warranties?
Uh, we haven't necessarily had extended warranties that we've purchased, but I would be curious to see if it included any kind of, um, supplies with it, uh, toner or anything, um.
No, I think it's a repair, a repair.
Is it labor and parts? Is it a spark?
The, you know, the regular operating supplies are, that's your, your responsibility.
I, I, I would suggest we make a motion to purchase the machine, and with further, uh, review of the warranty, we can come back to this board and buy the, which we so desire. Come back to this board and say that warranty would be a better deal, then you can come back.
Okay.
To the warranty. Okay.
No problem.
I would agree with that.
All right. Somebody wanna make that motion?
So, can I, can I, I meant to say for, for twenty-seven hundred dollars, that doesn't have, that's actually a decision that could be made without the Board, correct?
Okay, okay.
So I, I would move that we authorize.
After proper review.
Okay.
Yeah, I would, I would move that we authorize the purchase of the machine. And leave it between you guys for further information to figure out whether the warranty is.
I second Gary's motion.
Okay, so, all right, the motion is to purchase the, the equipment at, uh, whatever it is, eight thousand, I was gonna give you the right amount, if you have it.
Eight thousand four hundred and twenty-nine.
Okay.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Five hundred cent machine.
There you go. All right, Jim, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item eight, Health Director Dennis Johnson, consider to take possible action on the conditional memorandum of understanding, setting forth an outline of acceptable terms for an Indian Cove water main easement, which agreement would be needed if the Indian Cove Association does not choose to be included in the water main pro, uh, project. Okay? Dennis?
Thank you.
I didn't see you move up here. Good morning, how you doing?
Good morning. Um, just to give you a little background on this project, because it's been going on for a long time and it's been a bit, uh, confusing at some points. But the past history of this project has been that there was a proposal to extend public water into the Indian Cove Mulberry and Tuttles Point area in two thousand and twelve. Indian Cove eventually chose not to pursue the public water at the time, which resulted in a necessity to create another route, bringing the water into Mulberry Point and Tuttles Point. A new alternative route was decided upon, but this route would still have to pass through about eight hundred feet of the Indian Cove area along a private roadway to get to Mulberry Point. An easement would have to be created in order to utilize that short section of road to put the water main into, to deliver water to Mulberry Point. So what is before you today is a conditional memorandum of understanding, which sets forth terms for an Indian Cove water main easement. The terms have been established through consultation with attorney, consultant, Norb Church, and also input from the Indian Cove Board of Directors. This document before you does not represent a final, um, easement, but it is a memorandum of understanding, which would define the terms of an easement if it was eventually established. The necessity for this easement, as it says in the, um, agenda today, is, is depending upon whether or not Indian Cove decides to pursue the water main project at this point. So there's currently some new financial incentives right now through the state peer or the Public Utilities Regulatory Authority to allow more funding for these water main extension projects, which considerably reduces the cost of the project, and there's also, um, some federal subsidies, subsidies and loan forgiveness money that the governor is trying to get passed through the bond council in order to make these projects more affordable. So, that's basically the background on the project. It's, it's sort of evolving at this point because of the additional funding. But what we have to consider is this memorandum of understanding in order to be able to lock in some terms of agreement if an easement is really required to go through Indian Cove. Um, so, this easement's been kind of scaled down to eleven items. I could go over them with you if you like, but they're basically, um, such things as road surfaces will be completely restored, um, after the installation of the water main. That'd be a fire hydrant will be located, um, the water main pipe will be sized sufficiently to accommodate future expansion in the Indian Cove. There'll be no cost for the work described in the easement, uh, including the reasonable cost to review of the final document by Indian Cove Legal Council. Um, no blasting will be allowed in Indian Cove property to minimize potential damage to wells. And then we spelled out certain properties, homes along the route that would have their wells tested before and after the water main extension to make certain there was no damage to the wells. Um, there's also a condition allowing homes on Daniel Avenue and Lower Road to be able to connect to the public water main if they wish, but they were not obligated to do so. And at the final water main easement, would, would be prepared in town-approved forms and would incorporate standard Connecticut Water Company easement conditions and standards. And all easements will be finalized within the same time period and submitted to the town meeting, and part of bonding referred as one package. And then the last one is construction to begin with, one year of referendum approval of the water main extension constructed by the, bonded by the town, subject to conditions beyond the town's control. So these are basically the highlights of the memorandum of agreement. And, um, like I said, these were decided upon and approved by the, uh, special consultant that we hired, Norb Church, and also the Indian Cove Association has, is familiar with these easement proposals as well. They have added input to this and, and have commented on it. So we think we have really the, a, a good working document at this point for the town to consider.
So the association approved this, then?
No, they haven't.
Okay, so.
We have sent drafts to them, back and forth, and we have established a final approved form now, which we'd like to run through this Board of Selectmen, so.
So we'll approve it first, they're, and then it'll go to them.
Right.
Okay.
Do you wanna talk about why you're.
Pam, why don't you come up here? I might add that Pam has been heavily involved in this process too.
Yeah, from when we met last time.
Yeah, it was back in July.
Right. Um, so what's prompting this is, um, Dennis has, you know, been monitoring when, uh, the application for this funding, this additional funding, so we can take advantage of it, and Dennis can probably tell you more details about it. It's kind of almost a competitive thing among towns, so. Um, as soon as that application comes out, Dennis is gonna submit it, and, um, what he's trying to do is, it's kind of an alter, it's an either or situation. Either Indian Cove doesn't wanna take part, in which case the application is gonna be for Tuttles Point and Mulberry. Or Indian Cove, because based on some preliminary discussions with, um, the new leaders of that association with Dennis, um, there is a, a kind of perhaps a change of heart in that they might be interested now that they understand that there's this funding. So Dennis wants to be ready in either situation, all three or just the two.
All right, so you're gonna do the other ones regardless? You're hoping to add this one too?
Yeah, I was gonna get to that point. Tuttles Point and Mulberry Point have, have, showed an interest in this project. You know, whether they gotta go through the new route on private property or bring it through Indian Cove is uncertain at this point. Depends upon whether or not Indian Cove decides to, to get aboard. So, we have two communities that are in favor of this project at this point.
And just the third, okay.
And, and Dennis, I think, is working, we also met, um, the First Selectmen, myself, Dennis, uh, met with the water company to get more detail about, you know, their input to kind of make sure that they, you know, are gonna give us as much money as possible.
Right.
Um, and they articulated to us that, you know, that they were more than willing to meet with the associations separately to, um, in a way educate them on, you know, based on the water company experience and all these other shoreline communities, et cetera. Uh, so that, I think, is something Dennis is working on right now, is trying to, um, facilitate those meetings, to have the water company meet with the three associations individually, to be able to, you know, field questions, uh, and explain it more than we're able to.
See, the, the funding has changed dramatically, where the cost, you guys can correct me if I'm wrong here, where the cost has changed, uh, to such a, uh, point that if we are fortunate to get the grants, that the cost could be cut almost in half to, to the, to the residents.
Ultimately, yeah.
All right, which would, uh, in our opinion, um, bring a lot more of the residents down there in favor of tapping into the water.
Cause I know the two concerns people have, I've talked to them, is, is the, um, process, which it sounds like, you know, that can always be managed once you educate them, and then the cost is a second one, you know?
Yeah.
I think it's more of the cost.
Yeah.
And, and if we are so fortunate to get the grant from the, the fund, and that's why Dennis has been so diligent and, and kind of chomping at the bit to get all the pieces in place, because we wanna get in line to make sure that we're considered for the grant. Um, I, there's a, there's a chance that more people in Indian Cove would.
Yeah.
Wanna jump on board. Can I, is that my correct?
Yes, and Governor Malloy has also set aside fifty million dollars in loan forgiveness funds, which is supposed to be approved at the Bonding Commission, State Bonding Commission, this October or the latest in December, to also augment costs for these types of projects. So, you know, we could also be gen, be fortunate to get a loan forgiveness, uh, grant, where this would reduce the cost even another twenty-five percent. So theoretically, the cost would only be twenty-five percent, uh, shared by the, by the town or by the residents, so.
And there is some time sensitivity of, the only other thing I wanted to express is that, um, from Dennis's point of view, it, he believes we're in this kind of timeframe of November, December. So I kind of, we urge, you know, these associations that might have interest to, to really, you know, take up the water company's offer to meet with them and to do it within this two-month period so that, you know, we can get these funds, um, and be possibly chosen.
Yeah.
And, and the reason the town does this as opposed to the water company is that the town, A, has bonding capacity, B, has the ability to get the grants and rebates, uh, in, in order to make this work. But when the, when the funds are all paid off, does the town own this infrastructure forever, or does it get transferred to the water company?
Yeah, the water company has an agreement with the town to transfer the operation, the maintenance, uh, the water main to the water company.
Okay.
That will occur relatively quickly after the project is completed. So, the only thing the town would be obligated to do would be pay for the maintenance of, uh, fire hydrants, but the water distribution system would, would be diverted to the Connecticut Water Company.
And from the town's standpoint, the town's cost would essentially be reimbursed by the residents who benefit from this.
Right.
Right. But the town has to apply for the grant.
Right. Only the town can get the grant, uh, that, I just wanna make that clear. Point three, I, I, I found was interesting, that the water main, uh, the Indian Cove under this is under no obligation to participate in this, but they wanna make sure that the what main, what, um, the water main pipe diameter is substantial enough so that the Indian Cove folks can, at a later time, hit it. Which actually, I, I guess, would increase the cost to the other two associations. If, if, if this is, if the water company is required to install a larger pipe, I assume that's a, at a higher cost. And everybody understands this, and, and is there, does the Indian Cove group get a free ride?
No, that's not necessarily true. If, um, if the Indian Cove Association decided, say, two years later, that they wanted to tie in the public water, they would have to do that at their own expense. They would be a private entity applying for city water at that time. They'd be outside the timeframe of the grants and this loan. They'd be a separate project on, by themselves. So, and Mulberry Point and Tuttles Point would not have to share any additional costs if Indian Cove decided to come in at a later date and, and connect to public water.
The only thing I'd add to that, because I think you're going to the size of the pipe, my understanding, and I'm not the expert, but I think it was either based on some earlier discussions with Dennis, or maybe even the water company, is that that's the size pipe they're gonna put in anyway, but that, that it was the association that kind of wanted to flush that out, so to speak.
Yeah, something like this, they must have standard sizes if they use.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the cost is in the labor of insulation, not in the cost of the pipe. And my understanding is anybody that wanted to hook up later on shares in the total cost anyway. I mean, their, their portion is proportioned on what it originally cost.
Well, it depends on if, if you hook up two years later, and you were not part, part of the study area where the water main was extended, then that's, you, there are additional fees you'd have to pay, because you would not be on the water main route. You'd be bringing the water main into your new association. That's a different construction project altogether, and.
But I thought up until, I thought there was like a ten-year limit that you had to re, well, I, I don't know if that's the right word, but you end up sharing in that initial cost, or part of your cost is a calculation of what that initial cost was. Up until a ten-year, I thought there was like a ten-year period where, you know, if you took advantage of something, uh, you had to pay for that.
Yeah, if the water main is in front of your house on the street, then that applies. But if you had to bring the water main to a whole new geographic area, it's a different project.
Wouldn't that, okay.
And what you're suggesting is that the current, I, there, there could be another grant or another program two years from now, or five years from now, but the grants and the rebates that we would be applying for now would not benefit a later hookup.
Correct.
Correct.
So, so maybe that's their penalty for not choosing it now, but is it, okay.
Correct.
And the water companies seem to be emphasizing that it'll be much more cost efficient if it could be a bigger group.
Sure.
Oh, absolutely.
So they're really trying to get Indian Cove to be part of that.
Now, Dennis, just, if, so assuming that this all goes through and the association is on board, and, you know, does every homeowner have to do it? But if, but they still have to pay, that's the whole.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
Okay, whether they choose to hook up or not, I don't know, okay. Okay.
Okay.
All right, clarify. So if it goes by your house, you have to pay.
Yeah.
Correct, yeah.
That, that assessment, but you don't have to pay for the hookup. I just wanna make, I just wanna clarify your point.
No, I knew that, but I meant this.
Yeah, and I wanna clarify for people listening.
Thank you, thank you. Um, so what do you want us to do to prove the, to the, uh, prove the conditional memorandum of understanding, setting forth an outline of acceptable terms for Indian Cove water main easement, um, which agreement would be needed if the Indian Cove Association does not choose to be included in the water main property?
Right, now this, this would.
I'll second that.
Was that your motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll second, okay.
Okay. So we're really just endorsing the process. I mean, we're not approving any particular document or any particular deal. We're just endorsing the continuation of the process.
It's on the shelf in case we need it.
Yep.
That's.
Yep.
Am I correct? I mean, that's the easiest way to.
Yes, and you're, you're, you've basically agreed to these basic terms that would be in an easement should Indian Cove not participate.
Right, okay. Any discussion on the motion? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Enamish, thank you. Thank you, Dennis, thank you, Pam. Okay. Item nine. Item nine, Energy Task Force, Fred Volker. Back a couple of weeks early.
Sorry about that.
No, that's great.
Yeah, you get on it. I like that.
But we have a deadline.
Joe, I think we have to add to the agenda authorize the infrastructure funding program application that Fred's about to discuss.
All right, why don't you make that motion? I'll be happy to add. It's add 9.2, well, all right, we can do it in any order. 9.3 would be authorize the infrastructure funding program application. I think that's what it's called, isn't it? Publicly Accessible EV Charging Infrastructure Funding Program. We'll get you the exact wording, but it's on the application.
Do you have that traced? Okay.
That's the amount is wrong. Oh, I'm not dealing with the amount. I'm just saying, I'm just saying that we have to authorize
Motion's been made to add item 9.3.
I'll second it.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, okay. Item 9.1, remove from the table and take possible action on agreement between Connecticut Light and Power and Town of Guilford for the Bright Idea Grant to be used for installation of an electric charging station in town and authorize the first selectman to sign. Do I have a motion to remove from the table?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, we did that. Now, consider and take possible action to authorizing the purchase and placement of a dual EV charging station at the parking lot behind Town Hall pending receipt of deep grant. Okay, that's what we're discussing.
Right.
Okay.
And there's a deadline for applications. That's why I'm back early.
Okay.
The deadline is November 15.
Okay, so let's lose, lose time.
And a few gentlemen and ladies will approve that, and it goes on to our Energy Task Force, and you can make the deadline. So what you're talking about now is, actually, last time, we didn't have a grant.
Yeah.
Right.
And this time, we have a grant.
That's even better.
So mysteriously, the grant popped up right in time.
Sometimes it pays to wait a little bit.
From the state, and so we now have up to $10,000. I have to say up to $10,000, because I'm not sure exactly how much they will approve. Some items, they may or may not approve of our application. So, we may have up to $10,000, but we also have the Bright Idea Fund for $10,000.
So we should be able to cover the whole cost of the project?
We will, with these two grants.
Okay.
And what I'm asking you to do is approve the project subject to the grant.
Well, I'll make a motion that we move from the table.
We did that.
We did that, okay. But then, do we wanna say the funding first, Gary? Is that how you wanna do it?
Well, I think we have to authorize the first selectman to
Sign one.
Sign the grant, the new grant, and get, once it's prepared, and get it in by November 15th.
Okay.
And then ultimately, you know, it may come back, because there's a few uncertainties in terms of cost of electricity, you know, of the electrical hookups and all that, but
So let's apply for the grant.
Let's apply for the grant.
Let's see that first. Do you want to make that motion?
Gary, you make it.
I move that we authorize the first selectman to sign the Publicly Accessible EV Charging Infrastructure Funding Program Grant.
Okay.
Lot of words.
Motion's on the table. May second it. Any discussion on applying for the grant? Unanimous. Call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay.
And now we get to the cost. Go ahead, Fred.
Okay, so, we have two bits, two proposals for the station itself. One is for $9,900, and the other one is for $10,900. There's a slight difference, and we have to tease that out. I'm not quite sure at this time what the difference will be. And, you know, there are technical differences in these two stations, so, and, you know, we haven't really discussed this yet at the Energy Task Force.
So I was gonna say, do we wanna wait?
Yeah, we don't have to approve the contracts to purchase.
Yeah, no.
But I would like you to approve
He does have to put a budget into the application.
So I would do the higher one, to give you the flexibility.
Yeah, so, you know, $15,000 will cover it all, and I think we will come back. We will come under, we will probably be in the $13,000.
So allowed to exceed.
Yeah, well, what about the installation cost? Is that in here?
That's $2,500. You know, we had somebody, we have an estimate for that.
Okay.
And five options, and Jim Bartley recommends we use the one that is option number three. I don't know if you've got that or not.
I don't see that.
No, I don't think we got that.
Okay. For the electrical?
For the trenching and the wires and connecting the whole thing together.
Okay.
All right, now, I was, the discussion with Steve Nightoff, who's our facilities manager, and he said he would have to run the electrical service from Youth and Family Services. And I don't know if he also, I don't know if you've spoken to him, said that he believed that he might have to upgrade the service panel in that building, okay? Is that in this number?
It is.
Okay, good. And also, he said that the two spots that you originally had designated, he wants them moved over.
Correct.
Because if you put them there, he has no place to put his
Exactly.
Snow.
Yes.
Okay, so you did cover that.
Snow was one issue, and the other issue is there's a lamp.
Yep, yep. And he wants to put it on the other side of the handoff spot.
Which would compete with our charging station. So we gotta go a little to the left.
Okay, long as we're on agreement there, all right. So, but the $2,546 includes the upgrades to the service panel, Youth and Family Services, bringing the cable underground to the charging station.
Yes, and connecting it.
And connecting it and probably repaving
Yeah, there won't be any, but yes.
No. It does not?
I think it goes right through, under the grass, under the sidewalk, and into the island.
Okay, so it's gonna be no repaving
No.
Concrete cost or anything. Okay, good.
Maybe some concrete, because there's a base.
All right. I just wanted to make sure we got all that.
Why wouldn't we just approve up to $20,000 provided grant covers? Because it's saying here that the stringing of cables, five grand, and the signs are a thousand, so now you're up to potentially 16.
No, that all includes, 15,000 includes the panels.
All right, so I just wanna make sure we got enough to cover ourselves.
Yeah, well, 260,000.
Okay.
In fairness, I asked Jim to touch base with the town engineer in Madison
Yep.
who installed one over in Madison, just to see if there's something we haven't thought about. And he said he would, and just, who knows? Everything seems to grow, so I just asked him to check
That's why I'm saying, if the grant
To check with them and see.
Like, let's assume they give you 10,000, you know, 10,000 for the one grant, and you have the Bright Idea for 10. I mean, if it's all grant money
Ultimately, it might be.
With different, okay, okay.
I mean, and here, they're even talking about, you know, credit card cables. Are they gonna, is that wireless?
Yes. Around the station, it is wireless, on the more expensive one. And on the other one, we need additional cable, which is about $250.
All that is in your estimates.
It is.
Okay.
Yeah, interesting. Just a couple of other comments. The lower bid actually is a company that's under the state contract, so, you know, normally, we tend to
That's the one you have.
They give us a 30 percent, you know, they offer a 30 percent discount. Fred, are we assuming that the 30 percent is applied to all these additional items, the data collection and so on?
Yes.
What company did Madison use? Either one of these?
Madison uses the first one, the more expensive one?
A California producer.
I mean, the other thing that's interesting is this company claims that all of their production, all of their material suppliers are Connecticut-based.
Oh.
You know, so, and they're cheaper.
Right.
So does his Energy Task Force have to review these two bits, these two estimates?
I think they should review it for the process. The equipment is somewhat different, the control items are somewhat different, you know.
Yes.
I don't have the capacity, honestly.
You see, I've been running this project because of time problem without them
Right.
so far. And we need, we have some very good people in this Energy Task Force.
You do a good job.
People better than me, that, whose import we need. So, and we have a meeting, yeah.
We're simply authorized you to keep going.
Yes. All right, I authorize you to keep going.
And, you know, if you stay below whatever amount you approve, you know, go ahead with the application, and so on and so forth.
The application has to be in by the middle of November. The site, the equipment doesn't have to be in till the middle of April.
Right, so I'm
So, we have time to
I'm thinking, once he meets with the Energy Task Force, then perhaps he comes back, you know, when he's ready, when he's got the grant money and he's ready to pull the trigger on one of these contractors, he'll come back and say, well, the Energy Task Force recommended this company, and I'm asking you to approve that.
Yeah. I can do that, no problem.
Okay, good.
So we did the motion up to 16, right? Or, I just say up to whatever the grant money is.
Oh, yes.
Well, I mean, I'm not sure they get that all of that grant money.
Fred will work with Karen to fill out the application.
Karen has a personal
Karen has a, okay.
I have a pencil, and then she can
He'll pencil it in. Fred will work with Karen to get it, get the application in. I've looked at that. I mean, I think, I don't know what the state's gonna do. I, you know, I penciled it. I think we can meet all the criteria which should get us the $10,000, but they may do something different.
Except for the light?
Except for the light, maybe.
You see, they want 24-hour light on the station, and our lights shadow off at 12.
Well, we'll have to work around it.
So I ask
Because of neighborhood issues, but then they suggested, you know, a motion detector light. If a motion detector light qualifies, so, I don't know who's gonna pull it here at 2:00 in the morning to fill up, but
That's another $800, because we need a new cable, and
But, you know, you got the issues like that.
But I'm hoping that on the more expensive one, they have a light inside the unit, that that light may be sufficient. And I asked that very question, which I haven't gotten answered to yet. So maybe we can
We also have a historic commission, historic district commission issue on signage. So, I mean, yeah.
All right.
We need a sign, we need a sign, because that's part of the rules.
And the state, which the state provides.
Steve wants it, well, party, one.
Some, yeah.
Okay. All right.
So it's, and maybe I just wanna add one thing.
Sure.
You know, the $10,000 grant, we may not get it all, because they may not give us approval as part of the grant for the, you know
Controlled, controlled devices.
For the control devices of the signal, you know. They may or may not. You know, you need a credit card to use these things, and then it sends a signal via internet or space to some central unit for statistical reasons and for the credit card problem. And that part, see, they want us to have 30 months, they want us to give the people 30 months free energy charge right. And that's why they don't approve that, maybe as part of
Oh, because they don't want you to charge, yeah.
But maybe it's, if it's all built in and you have to buy it, maybe they do.
Okay.
And I think that would be the advantage of one of the units, the more expensive one.
Okay.
These are all little questions that we still need to figure out.
Well, 30 months, we could figure that out.
Yeah.
Okay. Gary, you had 9.3?
Well
That was just take action, author, well.
You also need to do 9.1.
That's what I'm saying.
No, we took it off the table.
You have to make a motion to authorize you to sign
Yeah.
the Bright Idea Grant.
Oh, okay.
That's what we did, okay, all right. All right, I need a motion.
Can we combine it?
Just go back. We're authorized, the first select to sign both grant, the Bright Idea Grant and the new grant application, and we are
Authorizing up to 16.
authorizing the Energy Task Force to proceed with accumulating the correct numbers up to $16,000 to come back and ultimately provide a budget and a recommendation.
Second.
You gonna put that in one motion?
Let's put it all in one motion.
That's why I was confused. I was trying to get to before, okay.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Okay.
Fred, you're doing a great job on this.
Right, if you wanna call me about how the credit card stuff works, we could talk about that, because I know how that works.
Yeah, okay, good.
Well, what we're told is that everybody that has an electric vehicle is in this credit card system, because that's how they all work. So, we were concerned about that, you know, if you get the credit card thing, well, what if you don't have a credit card? Can you use it? We're told that people that have electric vehicles know about this, and they have a card that works.
Does the task force have any idea of how many electric vehicles are in the town?
2,000 are registered in the state.
Somebody driving by on the highway.
2,000?
2,000 are registered
In the state?
In the state.
Be interesting to know how many.
We need a property tax abatement for electric vehicles in Guilford.
Thank you, Fred.
Maybe I'll buy the first one, Fred.
The issue is also tourists and people like that.
Yeah, yeah.
Because they advertise that it's
The state's providing the grant for tourism for people moving through. It's not particularly designed for, you went down to a selectmen's meeting, you park your EV there
No, no.
and plug it in. It's designed for people moving through.
People driving by on the highway, running out.
Okay, let's move along. Consider and take possible action on a proclamation declaring the month of November as pancreatic cancer awareness month in the town of Guilford.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Please don't leave until you've signed the proclamation. Cindy's passing it around now. Okay, appointments and resignations, we have quite a few. Excuse me. 11.1, act on a recommendation to move Laura Collins from an alternate to a regular member of the Conservation Commission to fill a vacancy for a term to expire February 28, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. 11.2, act on a recommendation to appoint Jack Penders to the Land Acquisition Commission as the Park and Recreation Commission representative for a term to expire February 28, 20, is that right, 2014? That can't be right.
No. I think it's 2018.
2018, okay, thank you.
2018, Jack.
I saw Jack here. Where is he?
So moved.
Raise your hand, Jack. Nice seeing you, Jack.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. 11.3, act on appointment of Victor Anatra to the Housing for Economic Growth Committee. All those in favor?
I'm, so moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That would complete our committee. George just left, so now he can start working on it. Act on a reappointment of David Weinberg to the Cable Television Advisory Board for a term to expire June 30, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous. Act on a recommendation to appoint George Underhill as an alternate to the Planning and Zoning Commission to fill a vacancy for a term to expire February 28, 2016.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Act on a recommendation to reappoint Gary Gilbert to the Board of Fire Commissioners for a term to expire October 16, 2018.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved. Act on a recommendation to reappoint Dean Bishop to the Public Works Commission for a term to expire May 31, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, approved. Act on a recommendation to reappoint Dean Mitchell to the Public Works Commission for a term to expire May 31, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, approved. Act on a recommendation to reappoint Scott Orenstein to the Standing Billing Committee for a term to expire June 17, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved, excuse me. 11.10, act on a recommendation to reappoint Carol Ott to Youth and Family Services
Last, so moved.
For a term to expire 20, uh, to September 30, 2018. Let me finish. Let me finish.
I'm sorry, I said some of it.
All those in, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and 11 11, Act on a Recommendation to Reappoint Joseph M. Trano Jr. to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a Term to Expire February 28, 2018.
Some of it.
Second.[1461.54]